All three things. All right, Kate Blangi, can you start the pledge, please?
You bet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. So our first order of business, now that we're called to order, is for election of a board chair and vice chair. I don't know if there are any nominations for board chair from board members.
Esther?
Yes.
I'd love to nominate your.
Okay, again, one more time, I'd like to ask people to please mute if you're not muted. So the board members can hear each other, that would be super helpful. As well as enter your first and last name into your square for purposes of minutes. And there is a motion on the floor for chair for Cheryl Everly, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Erin, any discussion?
Both.
What?
I think I have to say, yes, I would do that, right? Yeah. I have to accept that nomination.
Nomination?
Yep. To be confirmed.
Any further discussion before we vote? Seeing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote. Carissa?
Hi.
Sarah Gallagher? I think she's running us the show. Erin?
Hi.
And Kate, I can't see your square, but I know you're here, Kate Davis.
Hi.
Hi. So that is a quorum, so I'm gonna go with it because I know Sarah's also trying to run a parent workshop at the same time. So congratulations Cheryl, you are our new board chair.
Cheryl, you're in trouble now.
You know what? We're all in trouble, right? Yeah. The role, what is that extent of poem, the man in the arena? That's us. We are the ladies in the arena. Okay, so next up. nominations for vice chair. I'd like to nominate Carissa.
Jill Carter.
Do we have a second?
No.
Is that Kate? Thank you, Kate. Any discussion? Carissa, are you interested in that role?
I will be your second Cheryl.
Thank God. We're gonna need one. Good. So we need to vote on that, so all in favor, do we go one at a time? I think we need to, because I can see everybody, so let's go Erin. I can't hear you.
Hi.
Hi, Kate?
Hi.
And I'll be an I, and Sarah is still in her other occupado mode, so we have 301, is that how we do that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, so the, one thing I wanted to say, thank you Kate, and welcome, although it is, you know, a little bit hot, it's number two on our list. Happy to have Kate join our board as Eric stepped off, and also happy to have Sarah back, hi Sarah.
Hi, sorry Gwen, I was trying to do a parent workshop in this, but I'm in now, I'm in.
Good, good, thank you, okay, great. One thing I just wanted to remind Kate, you may not know this, but I just wanted to, because you haven't been on this board before. Three people makes a quorum, just so you know, so we can't have conversations of three, we can't, please don't email everybody on the board. Because that's, you know, that makes it a quorum as well, things like that, just try to remember. You know, just one-on-one conversations are fine, but as soon as you put in somebody else on the board, then we've got a quorum and that becomes, you know, a meeting, right? And we're supposed to let the public know we're having a meeting.
Got it.
Just so you know. There's also gonna be probably some board training coming up. Yeah, okay, good refresher for everybody, and definitely Kate, something you want to be, you want to participate in, because the, the rules of a board member are not always intuitive unless you've done it before.
Okay.
The other thing I thought would be useful to do tonight is to get people assigned to our standing committees that we have operating. We have enough committees so that everybody gets one, isn't that nice? So just for background, the committees are policy, safety and security, the superintendent review committee. And we have two people that we need on our building committee that we just put together a couple of weeks ago. I was thinking we could call this, you know, a one-year assignment. Next year when we do our organizing committee, we can shake it all up again, you guys can shake it all up again, I don't know if I'll still be on the board because my, my term's up next year. But it, I think it worked well for people to move committees around, but this would be a one-year assignment. And I thought it would be good to go in order of seniority. And so actually that puts Sarah first, so Sarah, would you like to make a choice?
Yeah, what did I miss?
Of the committees, or of the?
No.
Of the, oh, I'm sorry, of the organizing part? Well, they made me chair.
Okay.
While you were on the phone, and made Carissa vice chair.
Uh huh. Okay.
Okay. So you're actually the most senior person.
Yeah.
Would you like to take a pick at the committees?
Yeah, I'm gonna do the building.
Building, okay, so we'll put Sarah there. I am next in seniority, so that would be, I'll take building as well, because we started on that as well. Carissa? What would you like to do?
I'll continue on the superintendent.
You want to stay on that one, okay?
Yep.
Okay, Erin? Policy or safety and security?
I'm gonna go with policy.
Are you, you are a gutsy girl, good.
It's already on my calendar for tomorrow.
All right. And Kate, that leaves you with safety and security.
I'll take it.
Okay, great. Let's see, we need to get you guys all on the circulation lists, right? For those committees.
Yeah Cheryl, I wrote everyone down and I will inform the correct people who's on what committees, so they'll get their emails.
Okay. And actually, just for everybody's edification, I also have joint chair committee, that's where all the chairs get together and organize, talk, figure out what's going on across the SAU. Okay. Next up, we have approval of minutes, so we have the February 10th public minutes. Did anybody have? Questions?
Anything?
I do.
Did or did not, sorry?
Thank you, on the bottom of page one, my name is Garcia DePerey, it's not Garcia.
Oh, you're right.
Casually Garcia's fine, but in a document like this.
Nope, you're absolutely right. Don't have to explain that. I had a couple on the second page under, oh shoot. Well, there's no numbers, okay, so second page, when we're talking about the budget, so there's a paragraph, one, two, three, four lines in. Where it says SMS is also hiring half a person for a school psychologist, I don't think that's accurate. And point eight of a school social worker, I think that should read as SMS is also expanding the school psych, psychologist role from point five FTE to one FTE. And the school social worker from point eight FTE to one point zero. That's accurate, isn't it, can somebody verify that for me, where's Kate?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Yeah, we're not hiring new people, right? We're expanding the hours of people that we have, okay.
Well, one member, one retired, so we're actually, it's a new person, but it was a retirement.
Oh, okay.
So it's not a new position, but it is a new person.
All right. Do we think that's your main? I think it's more important that we're moving, you know, from a half a person to a full person, and who's actually the person, I'm not sure really matters.
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody remember who the visitor was, who asked if money was available? We're just quoting a visitor. No? Okay. I think. I'm sorry, did somebody say something?
I think someone was just coming in Cheryl.
Okay, sorry. The other thing I noticed was in that same paragraph on the second line, where it says trust funds have been established that will protect SMS, I think that's a little bit too broad, I think we, we have two trust, we have, right, we have two trust funds. I think we should be clear about that, trust funds have been established for building improvements and unanticipated special education costs to protect SMS. Just want to make sure people know what, we can't use those funds for other purposes, they're just for those particular types of purposes. And then at the bottom, where it says adjournment, call to order of a, of a public board meeting in a non-public session, we did not have a non-public session that night, if I remember correctly.
We did have a non-public, we went into for superintendent mid-year review.
Okay. Okay, good, all right, so call to order of, at 5:57 of a non-public board meeting then, right? So that's probably what that is. So under number one, it should be non-public board meeting, and then we had the non-public session. Okay, thank you. Is this all the same one, this is all February 10th? Okay. So I had some more edits, actually. In paragraph. Paragraph five. Where it says there are not enough teachers, classrooms, and staff, I think we should elaborate on that to make it clear. And staff for all students in the building at the same time with six foot social distance. Just make sure the mitigating factors are understood. And I think we need to insert, it's kind of long, actually. On page four, where Ms. Magri moved to develop a parent, I would call that a parent subcommittee, I think that was the intent. Would you agree, Carissa?
Um.
Or was it a collaborative subcommittee, I was thinking it was a parent subcommittee, is that?
It was more related to parents.
Parent, okay, just to be clearer. And then Mr. Von der Leyden explained the committee would have more flexibility and collaboration than a, than a regular board meeting. I think we need to include some things that I, some comments that I made. Ms. Evilly asked what a subcommittee would be tasked with, the deliverables it would provide, and when would it be disbanded? Ms. Evilly also pointed out that it is the administrative's role to develop plans and the subcommittee would need to feed into the administration's work. She stated it would be better to have a skeleton plan for parental feedback than to task a parent subcommittee. And then Ms. Asbell indicated that most of the ideas that have been suggested, i.e. tents, using outdoor spaces, et cetera, have already been vetted. And Ms. Lucas said she thought managing a parent subcommittee would actually slow down her progress of developing plans. Anybody have a problem with any of that clarification? No? Okay, good. And I do have one more, we, we made some adjustments to the January 13 minutes, but I found, they're listed here, I guess you guys probably noticed that, right? I went back to the January 13 minutes, they weren't amended. They're on the website, but they're not corrected. I think we need to get that done, isn't that right Esther, is that how we should do it?
Yep, I, I don't know Jen, can you help us out with that?
So the way it works is I send the minutes to Kayla with the changes or additions, whatever you're doing Cheryl, and then she fixes them online.
Okay.
I don't actually post anything.
I'll follow up with Kayla and see if she received the corrective minutes, it sounds like from Jen.
Because we don't usually list it here, what the changes were, is that right, or, I don't see the reason why we can't.
There was a discussion during the last meeting of whether it was clarifications or additions to the minutes.
Okay, I don't see a problem with having it here, I just thought that was a different practice than what we currently, than what we were doing. I don't have a problem with what's here. It's just other minutes don't have those edits in them, like this. So is that a practice we want to continue with? Anybody have an opinion?
So you're, Cheryl, you're speaking of, is, I'm confused into what, what you want to know, whether, what we're gonna continue with.
Do you see under 4.2?
Bear with me.
That's all right, it's on page four. Same minutes, those are long minutes.
Yep.
Okay, you see the list of clarifications that I asked for?
Yep.
We don't usually put those in that particular meeting's minutes, and that's what I'm asking about, I don't have a problem with doing it, I just don't know if that's a practice we want to continue to do, or if this one's an anomaly.
I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea, because do you think you would have noticed that they weren't corrected if they weren't in this?
Uh, no. I would not.
Socially serve a purpose, maybe we should.
I don't disagree with that. Okay, let's leave, let's do that going forward. But you're absolutely right, I would not have gone and checked if they hadn't been written down.
Right.
Because I just assumed it was done. Under 5.2, the financial report, I just want to clarify, I, the last sentence, Mr. Von der Leyden likes the in-person review and signature, but I disagree. It's not, I just want to be clear, I don't disagree with in-person review and signature, I love that, it's what, it's hard to get to the office during the SAU business hours. So that is my, it's not that I have an issue with that principle, so if we could add, because it's different, or difficult for board members to get to the SAU offices during business hours.
Should we specify in 5.2 that this is a procedure that will change once we're returned to in-person? Because I was, I'm pretty sure that's what we agreed upon, right?
It is, yeah. I think that's a good idea. So what would you say?
I think, I just want to speak to the minutes for a minute, if you didn't say it in the meeting, you can't add it now. You could, you could talk about it at this meeting, but unless you said that, Carissa, these are amendments to what was said at that meeting?
No, I understand, I'm pretty sure it was said, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that at last meeting, we, I think you Cheryl said that we should have a deadline as to when we should return to in-person signatures. I mean, correct me.
And Eric, but yeah, I remember having that conversation, that this was, wasn't gonna be forever, that this was gonna be a COVID thing.
Why don't we put it on our agenda for old business, then we can officially address it, as opposed to having it being convoluted in the note?
We could do that. Making a note here. Okay. I think we need to add a little bit more to the old business on the facilities committee update. I'd like to talk about what, we said this at the time, about how we started this two years ago, so I had some language for that. Ms. Evilly indicated that an updated facilities maintenance plan was initiated almost two years ago, and the building assessment was completed about a year and a half ago. With COVID, this project has been on hold. Since any building upgrades that would require significant funding typically take three to five years. Ms. Evilly asked that a building committee should be formed, or recommended the building committee should be formed to be in place when the educational programming analysis is complete. I think that's it. Although I am a little bit concerned about the comment that says the optics when kids are not in school and yet a new building is considered, and I think we should put it in this, you know, the, the minutes for this meeting. At this point, there's, we're not talking about a new building yet, we're, we're not anywhere near that. And I just don't want to gaslight us, you know, an issue that's not an issue, right? It's possible in the future that that would be the right recommendation, but we don't have, we haven't even had a committee yet, so I just want to be careful that we don't, you know, suggest we're starting, you know, excavation or planning for a new building. That's way premature. Then there was a typo, let's see, on page six. Cardo cap, carpeting and tile can convert 15 rooms from carpet to tile with a T, and it gets as F, tile. And on the last page, the next MOU discussion is March 10th for usage of, I think we need to clarify, additional paid administrative leave days. Just to be clear what days we're talking about. And then the last thing, Ms. Magri moved to go into a closed non-public session, it says public session, it's non-public. And I think that is it. Anybody else? That was a lot. I don't see anybody else? No other minutes, adjustments? Okay. All right. Then we also have non-public minutes for that night. Sure, that's it for the, that's it for minutes, right? This one and the next one? Yeah, non-public, okay. Any revisions to non-public minutes? Anybody? No? Okay. So can I get a motion for that, for those minutes? Accept those minutes?
I'll make a motion. To accept the minutes as amended.
Thank you, second, anybody? Erin, second goes to Erin. Any more discussion? Comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Is that Sarah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Carissa? Hi, Erin? Hi, Kate?
Am I not supposed to comment because I wasn't there, or?
Yeah, I think it's probably wise to abstain on this.
I'll abstain.
Okay, and I'll be an I, so that's 401, right? Okey dokey. I like to get that fun business out of the way. So now it's SAU 16 administrative update and return to school planning, so for this, I'm happy to turn this over to Esther.
Thank you, I'm just gonna give folks an update on the vaccination schedule before Kate starts, because some of it may make more sense based on what we've been able to organize with the Exeter Fire Department, so a huge thank you to Justin Pizon and that entire department for working with us along with our Seacoast Emergency Preparedness Partners, as well as our other planning partners in Ruth Ann and Mary Connor, so huge thanks to everybody that's been working since we got the okay to move forward with closed pods, which was as late as actually over the weekend, it went back and forth whether schools could have closed pods or not. And then by Monday, it was determined in a meeting that we. So that being said, that's exactly what we're moving forward with. Stratum Memorial School, all employees of Stratum Memorial School are scheduled for their first dose on 3/18, which is next week. And that makes. Second dose on 4/15, we will, we've been confirmed that we will be getting the Moderna, which there's a four-week lag between the first and second, and then a two-week lag for full immunization after the second dose. So that puts all of Stratum Memorial employees fully immunized by May 3rd, directly, directly following April vacation. So that is awesome news, and just for the record, all of our schools will be done by the 20th for their first dose of March, and their second dose by the 17th. We're putting a large group through on Saturday, the 20th, at Exeter High School, combining some schools in order to get everyone in before, to make that after spring break, everyone is fully immunized. So that, I will say, the caveat is, if our doses all come in, which we have, you know, been told they're ordered, we had to order them by one o'clock yesterday through the state, which we did, with the thanks to the help of Justin Pizon and some other folks getting numbers, et cetera, so we continue to finalize those plans, but those dates are set, those clinics are all registered with VAM, people are registered with VAM, we did that so people wouldn't have to go on for our employees. So I can tell you getting 1,200 folks in, up and running in a day was not simple task, but we did it, so thanks to our HR department and Ellen Reska for really working through that and working with me to get all that information in, because it's a pretty extensive spreadsheet, if you have had to register for your VAM, it's not just your name, first and last name, by any means. So we feel good, we feel great actually about that, and we're, we're excited to move forward to get everybody vaccinated and then fully immunized, so that being said, like I, I just, you know, that's the plan. Again, if we don't get vaccines for some reason, unknown reason, not known to us, of course, then that would affect it, but as of today, right now, we're on schedule to get those vaccines. And we're registered and ready to go, we have a walkthrough with, I have a walkthrough with Justin at the high school on Friday for our large sites. And then we've been working with our principals, we met with them today to ensure the schools are set up appropriately, because we will be doing it during the day to get, while the faculty are there for Stratum. So central office administrators will be going over to help with coverage as teachers leave to get immunized, and they have to sit for, be observed for 15 minutes. So on that day, there will be some fluctuating in and out of classrooms and coverage. But I'm confident we can get through that fairly quick, Justin is hoping we can do about, in an hour's time, somewhere between 40 to 60 people. So we should get through fairly quickly, pending all goes well, and there isn't any issues that we haven't thought of yet, fortunately, the Exeter Fire Department has been running clinics, so they're familiar, they're trained, they, you know, they're not brand new to this process, which is pretty helpful for us. A big thank you to our school nurses who have also been working in tandem with us, trying to organize and support, they clearly will be vaccinators at the buildings. We will ask for some volunteers perhaps on, on that Saturday of our school nurses, but they've been working tirelessly also trying to make sure everybody gets what they need and to keep our, everybody safe and healthy. So that being said, that lends itself to a variety of other planning things that sets into motion, and so I'm gonna turn that over to Kate and her team, who I also want to thank publicly, because they also have been working, I wouldn't say tirelessly, because I think they're pretty tired. So I think they've been working extensively, and trying to work through, you know, different planning options, so I'm gonna turn that over to Kate, Lucas and her team, thanks guys.
Great. Before you start Kate, that is like the best news ever, you know? Such a relief, you know, to hear that, that's coming together and the timing looks really nice. Can you define, what's a closed pod for everybody? That's new jargon.
Thanks Cheryl, I've just been talking vaccination talk the past three days, or four days, so I'm, thank you for bringing that up. A closed pod means it's a set-up clinic internally, and people, unless I register them, or we register them through SAU 16, we, no one can like drive up and get a shot or register on their own through vans for the site. So no one can, Stratum School would not be an option on any van site, for example, as a closed site. Versus a fixed site, which is like a Walgreens, that's a fixed structure that remains there all the time. Versus our regional sites that the state has, like our Exeter High School National Guard, that the National Guard is running. So there's kind of pop-up sites, like the National Guard, the state is organized regionally, I think there's 11 of those right now. There's fixed sites like Walgreens, CVS, that are beginning to get vaccinations and start that process, and then there are closed pods, and that's really a closed clinic that you partner, you're with a health partner and work through that, and we partnered with Exeter Fire.
Awesome.
Thanks for asking that question Cheryl.
Thanks Esther. So.
Speaker view, I feel like you're buried on my screen. There.
Lower up. Can you guys see that, is that appearing for everybody?
Great. Great.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to, just before I get into the details of the planning that's been going on at SMS, just a little brief history of sort of how this has all come to be. I think I had mentioned at the February board meeting that the elementary principals and of course, internal conversations at Stratum had been happening for months about what spring would look like and how we could potentially increase some in-person time for students. Not necessarily where we focused as much on the full return of five days, because if you remember correctly, in January, we were thinking we wouldn't even be able to go back to school after the holidays, because people were so concerned about the transmission of COVID. So really, the idea of five full days, even as a potential for this year, which is still obviously questionable, because there's a myriad of factors that play into that, hadn't been the focus. It had been much more about how do we increase in-person time or on-campus learning time. So what you're going to be seeing tonight is a couple of options when we looked at that, and then further conversations about the potential of a five-day experience. Let's see. There we go. So again, I had mentioned that we've done a little bit of planning. The first thing that we're going to talk about tonight is what we had done around increasing in-person or on-campus learning time for the remainder of the 2021 school year. Additionally, we'll talk a little bit about the potential of a return to five full days of in-person learning in the 2021 school year. And I think it's really important that I mention this now, and I'll mention it several times throughout this evening, that there are a series of things that need to fall in place for that to be a possibility. I don't want to mislead anybody or present something that as a definite, I just want to present our planning around that and what things need, what factors we need to consider, if that was a determination or the direction we went in. And then the third piece, which I think is really important, is the way we've designed the Summer Learning Academy for the the coming summer, and to talk about how we're going to utilize that time over the summer to continue to meet the needs of our students and to, you know, focus on their wellbeing. So when we were focused on increased in-person time or on-campus time, we had considered sort of the following factors. Certainly using that time, not necessarily as time for some of the more for content area academics, but really as wellness and SEL time. I think one of the largest concerns, and it was certainly expressed at the February board meeting, was the need for connection. There were some isolation concerns, concerns expressed about children's mental health. And so really thinking about that time as wellness SEL time with our students. Again, we were keeping them in small groups with their cohorted groups. So blue students on would be coming in essentially on white days for their SEL time, and white students in the white cohort would of course be coming in in blue days, because that's when they're in their distance learning days. The time with outside, we were to utilize our ESPs, our educational support professionals, to help facilitate those small groups. This makes sense for a variety of reasons. And I think probably the most important reason and thing we should focus on this evening is they have incredibly strong bonds with their students, because they've spent all year with those, or since November, or potentially since September, if they didn't change. But they have incredibly strong relationships with these students. And it really makes sense to harness that or to use that to the wellness and SEL activities. And then, of course, because the classroom teacher would potentially be, or would be inside with the students, the other half of the cohort. We would suggest that we hire a director for this to facilitate the programming. Ultimately, there isn't someone on staff right now that has the time to do this and do it well, and do it in a way that we wouldn't be then burdening a person or a class of people to do this work when they're already really focused on the task of educating the students right now. And then, of course, we would leave open the opportunity for any teacher to, on those days, take their entire class together outside. One of the examples I would give is certainly a number of our classes explore ecosystems, particularly in the spring, because there's a lot going on in the spring when it comes to ecosystems. And so if, for example, Mr. Saltis had his, he's not a great example because he's remote, Ashley Healy. Healy's class was studying ecosystems. If on one of those days she said, well, I'm actually going to bring my entire cohort together outside, and we're going to go off into the march to study some ecosystems, that would be an option, of course, for those people if they wanted to bring their entire cohort together. Of course, following our same safety guidelines and so on. So I'm going to be really upfront about the options here. The administration had come up with option one as our first option. And to be quite honest, still, I'll speak for myself, I feel like is the best option, but there were some roadblocks unanticipated. And so we ended up with option two at the end. But option one for us was to bring in two groups of students every day. So I'll give you an example. On Mondays, we would have from 9:45 to 11:15 in the morning, we would have white students that would come in, students in the white cohort. And it would be those students that have related arts in the afternoon. So we didn't affect the related arts classes. We really want to protect the programming of our related arts classes. And we also have heard from many families and students about how the related arts program had played into their connections to the school this year. And so it's really important for them not to miss those classes. So essentially, those white students in the white cohort would come in for about 90 minutes. And they would be outside doing some combination of outdoor SEL wellness activities, depending on what was planned for that week. And so that same group would then come in again, of course, on Wednesdays, because there'd be in-person on Tuesday and Thursday. So essentially, this would increase for all kids going from two or three days of in-person. That would remain the same, but it would also add an additional two times that they come to the school for 90 minutes for some wellness SEL activities. The biggest issue with this, and I know even the, I hate to use that, the biggest puzzle piece that would need tackling is transportation. And the reason for that is, as you know, busing is more challenging this year for a variety of reasons. But we have access, we don't, we do not have access to any additional buses after 1 o'clock in the afternoon. And so those students that would be coming in from that, for that 12 to 1:30, would have no transportation home. We could get them to SMS, but we'd have no ability to get them home in the afternoon. And for obvious reasons, and most importantly, including equity and access, we can't put that burden on our families, even though it may actually works for some. It certainly wouldn't work for all. And that's important to us, obviously. So given that, part of that equation, we started brainstorming option two, which is not quite as much time coming in for SEL and wellness. So we would be able to host one group of students per day. And obviously, again, the white cohort would come in either on a Monday or Wednesday, depending on which group they were in. It would also mean that we had to essentially flop when they have related arts. So it would be an upheaval to the related arts schedule in the sense of my child always has related arts at 9:45. Well, on blue weeks, it's actually going to be at 1:45. And then on white weeks, it's going to be on, at 9:45, so that we're again, not missing our related arts programming. We did, because we were only bringing in one group, we extended it to two hours. And it means they would come in once a week rather than two times a week. And this would utilize bus transportation. So in terms of the factors of making this possible, by doing this, we did have access to transportation and could implement this plan or implement this option.
Why don't we have buses after 1 o'clock?
Because we have the middle school and the high school, and their timing is different than us. So they have to be available to do those.
Okay. Right. Already spoken for. Okay.
You've got it. Cheryl, just as a sidebar to that conversation, and I know I've said this before at other board meetings, but Trish Daly has been incredible to work with this year. She has been, I mean, we call her Daly, and she is working so hard to be flexible and accommodating and reroutes and trying to make space. And she's been incredible to work with. And beyond that, the number of times that she has reached out to try to find other options for us, she really has been incredible. And I'm just grateful for the fact that she'll even consider when I'm throwing different plans that are all the time saying, hey, I need you to work this. And actually, it's not going to work. I know you did all that work, but I can't use it anyway. She's been really great to work with. So some of the things that we just, steps for us for consideration, again, were transportation, just ensuring our outdoor spaces are, you know, ready for the number of students to come in. It would mean additional tents. It would mean ordering some additional walkie-talkies, and obviously just gathering some new materials, depending on what we were doing outside. And then, of course, we had to make sure we had the indoor capacity in case of something like a lightning storm. So in most cases, you can stay outside for most reasons, particularly in the spring, when the weather has turned, when it's not eight degrees. But anytime there's a lightning storm, they absolutely have to come in. So we had to just make sure we had the space within the building that could accommodate all of those students in case we had to come inside. So and then staffing and hiring, this would potentially require, as I mentioned, someone to direct this process and then potentially additional paras to ensure that we had enough coverage in all the areas that needed coverage. So those were, that's sort of where we were at through the month of the end of January and most of February, and certainly through February vacation, was really what we were, the vast majority of our attention was focused on that, because it felt very feasible and to be able to put it in place relatively quickly, relatively quickly being a relative phrase. So then we, as everybody is aware, President Biden came out asking for all educators and personnel within an educational organization to be moved up in the vaccination list or queue or process. And so as everyone knows, that's obviously a huge part of the potential for a full return to in-person learning, for five days. In addition to that, we still are working through transportation. Again, I, it is a complex process of organizing all of that transportation that still keeps our children safe and timely. You know, we often talk about double runs or having a first trip and a second trip, or, you know, those things. And ultimately, when you look at that across an SAU, an organization as large as SAU 16, you'd be basically in school from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM to get everybody in. And that's not feasible. So, you know, that's an issue that will be worked on. And I know senior leadership and Trish have been working on that very closely. Then the MOA, so the memorandum of agreement that was in place, and ultimately voted on by all stakeholders. So the board, central office, the associations, you know, collectively. And obviously, that was drafted with the information they had at the time that they were drafting it. And so I think everyone acknowledges that that was, that's always evolving. And that's what we're finding with this pandemic, is information is changing pretty frequently. So that would be something that has to, they would open those negotiations and go into that process. And I can, without trying to speak for our associations, because that's not my job, or I don't want to do that, they have always been and continue to want to work really closely with our board. And there's always been a really collaborative relationship. And I know that when I've spoken with both of the association executive boards, they are very open to that conversation and looking forward to to working together to move forward in the best interest of the children and of the families and of the staff. Other considerations for us are space. And I know we talked about this last time, but I think it's important to mention again that we, it's not just this classroom spaces that we need to ensure there's space for. I used the occupational therapist as an example last time, that we, you know, last year, we had three OTs in a Coda in a room that's about 10 by 10. And that's not possible. They certainly can't work with students in that space. So and that's just one example. You know, other examples would be the administration is now out of the art room. So we just need to be really thoughtful about how we use the space in the building and ensure that we can still run, you know, an excellent educational program with everybody back in the building, which the children deserve. Navigating food services, there's lots of complications with food services. Just timing, delivery means masks are not on when they're eating, which has an impact on how we plan. So that's a big piece for us to consider and plan towards. And I will, you know, it's important to mention here, we're planning on all of these things right now. We're, you know, coming up with six drafts. And we're always like, oh, that's not going to work. Let's go back to the drawing board. But I thought it was important to just highlight the factors that we're considering right now. And then there's just obviously lots of smaller stuff that we have to consider. Zones outside of the playground, because we're still doing cohorts for contact tracing, because that's obviously very important. Drop-off and pickup will have to look different than it's been looking this year, because it'll take significantly longer with more children coming and going. Again, custodial needs, what does that mean for our custodial staff? And then our schedule. So our schedule would potentially be impacted by the returns. We have to think about that critically. When we think about next steps for us as an administration, we think about surveying our families and seeking their input. You know, what their, what their options are, what they would prefer, you know, what they're hoping for their children. The formation of an internal SMS planning team. A lot of this work has been done at the administrative level, talking with the associations, talking at our leadership team. But we would need a small group of people that can really kind of get to the nitty-gritty right now and really get down to all of the logistics and just have some time together to do that, and wanting some cross-representation from the different departments within the building, as their needs are often different from one another. Again, meeting with the association leadership, we've been meeting with association leadership since about July of last year, pretty frequently. And it's been incredible work together, just to hear the different perspectives, to be unified in what we want for our children and for our staff and our community, and just continuing those meetings to ensure that we're hearing all perspectives and ensuring that everything's protected. Building facilities maps, I think I mentioned that before, we really would have to think about how do we, rooms would have to be moved, furniture would have to be moved. Would have to be really thinking differently about how we navigate the hallways, because there would be so many more children. What, we would have to increase the number of zones for outside playing. There's just a lot of stuff in terms of facilities and grounds that we would need to spend some time on, which I can tell you, Tim Harrington, our facilities director, is already starting to think about those things and has been, as well as Anne Walsh in food services. She's been drafting all sorts of ideas, and we've been going back and forth. Again, the schedule, and then furniture and material needs. And then obviously, there's a bunch of other little stuff that we would be fleshing out as we would plan for a full return, if that's a possibility this spring, depending on a myriad of factors that really all have to come together to make this possible. And then the final, yeah? Go ahead.
I was going to say, are you envisioning that kids stay with the cohort they're in? And this wouldn't be disruptive to their relationship that they built with their current teacher?
So that's a
Too early to say?
So that's a complicated question. And I say that with, every time we've had to make a change this year, that has been a really important question that our families have had to manage. And I think with, I feel strongly that we've done a really good job of trying in every single case to keep the teacher and student and the class makeup as consistent as possible. We have not been able to do that 100% for a variety of reasons, but we've worked really, really hard to try and do that. So my first instinct would be, in most cases, we could do that, because we would essentially take in fifth grade Mrs. Delelo's class, and she would have her blue and white cohorts together. And so there, we know she has 19 students, and those would be her kids. Where that gets a bit trickier is if we had remote students that wanted to come for five days in person. But let's use Katri Schaefer's, our other fifth grade, she's our fifth grade remote teacher. She has 23 students. If, say, 14 of her students decide they want to return, but nine of them want to remain remote, then those people are, those students are then having a new teacher, right? So there's, it's, in an ideal world, we'd be able to do that. I don't know how that would work out. I don't know that of our remote students, 100% of them would want to be back in the building, or 100% of them would want to stay remote. I don't know that. You know, and I also think that there will be families, if this ever comes to fruition this year in particular, and I'm not talking about next year, that are currently in the, in the distance, so they're on the blue-white alternating schedule, that if we went five days in person, may choose to go remote. I have heard from a number of families and parents, as this has become a more focused conversation within the community, that are nervous or not particularly in favor of a five-day full return this year. And so those families that have reached out, you know, they're, they may make the really difficult choice for their child to be then fully remote five days a week. And unfortunately, that would mean that they would not keep their teacher. So these are some tough decisions that families are going to be faced with.
Yeah. And actually, you answered my other, I had another question about whether this would include allowing the remote kids to come back as well. I know other schools that are, you know, working through their plans right now, that they kept their remote kids remote, because they couldn't handle it from a faculty standpoint, things like that. So you answered that question, though. I'm thinking that you have to find out what people want. That's, that's good. Okay. That's the end of my questions. If anybody else wanted to ask something.
I wonder, Cheryl, if it makes sense just to finish this, and then I could
Yeah, please. Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
So then, one of the other things that we have been talking about actually since last summer is what we wanted the Summer Learning Academy to look like this summer. And that was really based on And that was really based on, last year, we extended what we did for summer programming for both our students that have IEPs through special education, but we also offered services for our students that received some, some form of intervention, whether it was literacy, mathematics, or SEL services, or, you know, social emotional services. It was not as, and I cannot believe I'm using this word, it was not as robust as what we're proposing for this summer. But it, part of that was because we were in the middle of just getting into the pandemic and really weren't sure of what things we could offer or not offer. And it was sort of last minute. So what we're really been thinking about for this coming up summer is running the Summer Learning Academy. It would be both for our students that have IEPs and for any of our students who receive intervention services. That's almost two hundred students from SMS, so it would be going from about fifty or sixty kids to about two hundred.
Wow.
Yep, we're anticipating offering two, three-week sessions. Part of the reason for the offering of two-week, three-week sessions is six weeks is a lot of the summer. And for some of our families to commit to six weeks is really difficult because they have things planned. Or a child doesn't really want to do it at all because they just want their summer. And if we can sell them on three weeks, maybe more of them will join us. So we sort of established it that way. I should mention, and I'm sure Selena would, is probably trying to text me to make sure I mention this, but any of these decisions for any student that has an IEP is made at the IEP team table. It's a team decision. It is not a decision made by SMS or a parent is a collective decision that, that is made. And certainly at any point during those conversations, they could decide for four weeks or, or five weeks. That would be individually decided per child and their, and that, in their team. So we're, we are thinking of a Tuesday through Thursday, which is typical, we typically run a Tuesday through Thursday. However, it would be significantly more time. We're proposing an eight thirty to eleven thirty. And we're envisioning it sort of, I put camp style because that was really the best I could come up with. And thinking about it as three one-hour sessions when they came. So one of those hours would be arts and crafts, one of those hours would be cooperative games, and one of those hours would be literacy and nature. And what our hope for that time is that many of those students that receive services can have it done in a push-in format in small groups. So for example, if we have, you know, six children that are there on, and they need some work with Fine Motor, maybe one of our OTs is pushing into that arts and crafts hour and doing some of those direct services with regards to Fine Motor in the arts and crafts space with the kids right there while they're doing it. If that's not possible, so if we have a student that really needs some explicit one-on-one, great, that can happen as well. It can be, you know, maybe it happens during their cooperative game time and they're able to go with a service provider to a smaller, more, you know, less intrusive environment and get some more of that explicit one-on-one direct instruction. So, you know, that's that vision. We did, we did want to put some parameters around each hour in the sense of we want kids to feel that camp style. We don't want them to feel like they're missing all of these really fun and engaging activities. So within each hour, they wouldn't receive more than twenty to thirty minutes of service per hour. So that if there, does that, I'm not sure that's clear. So if you have questions, please feel free to ask. Again, both push in and pull out depending on the students' needs. Small group or individual. And then we just wanted to, to make sure it was clear that our pre-K programming would look entirely different for some obvious reasons. And that, that information will come out separately through specialized team meetings. So that's our vision for our Summer Learning Academy. We anticipate probably the need for twenty staff members to facilitate this and facilitate it well. And that's sort of our plan at this point. Feeling pretty excited about it. We're thinking about theming our weeks, which makes for some fun activities and some easier planning and collaboration with the, the number of adults that'll be there. It'll be important for that collaboration time. So those are the, the areas that we've been focused on for spring and clearly some summer planning. And then I think the next part of the board agenda is board discussion. So certainly asking any questions or of me is, I'm happy to answer them.
Kate first. Where are you, Sarah? There you are. Okay. You're at the bottom of my screen, Sarah, so it's hard for me to find everybody. Okay.
Thank you, Kate and administration. I, that's exactly what I think people are wanting to see is the next step. So I really appreciate that. Um, going back to in-person learning full-time, can we have a conversation about reaching out to the union, the teachers' union reps and asking if it can reduce the distancing from six feet to three feet? I guess that's a board question.
I'll take that, Kate. So we are moving forward on all of these items on this list. So I will be able to, I anticipate by the end of next week, have a, a much better answer for you. The answer to your question is we already are moving forward and trying to make plans to do that. And I know those are in motion for next week.
Okay. I don't want to step on anybody's toes and I'm new to this, but I'm just thinking at a board level, can we do this and not go through the SAU channels? Does that make sense? Like, as a, as the Stratum Memorial School Board, can we talk to the representatives directly and ask at a, at a local level?
I, I would recommend that you work through your chair, which is Cheryl, and Cheryl has a meeting next week with joint chairs as she spoke of to talk through this, this particular MOA.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I have a question. So when I'm looking through this, we have it, it feels a little bit like an all of the above. Because, because everything has been, I hate to use the word fluid, but it evolves, right? So at first we had a certain set of assumptions in February, right? And arrived at, you know, the first part of the plan. And then things changed, right? And we're looking at, you know, possibility of full return to in-person. Are we looking at these? Are we considering these as sequential options? Or are these things that are being vetted in parallel? I'm just trying to understand operationally, what are we thinking here?
So I'll speak as candidly as I can about this, Cheryl. I think as a, at the building level administration, I think the conversations that Esther was referring to that are taking place. Ultimately, and I don't want to say puts us in a holding pattern, I, I feel strongly that there are all of these factors that I mentioned and it's on the screen this up right now. That have to really truly align perfectly in order for a full return this year. Like, these things have to happen. We can't have one of them not happen and another happen, right? Like, these pieces all have to come together. If we feel by like the end of next week that that's, it looks like these pieces are going to fall in place, or I don't want to say fall in place, but if people are going to work really hard and this is going to happen, and we know that by like the end of next week, I feel strongly that we don't focus our time on bringing kids in for some SEL time for the month of April because the magnitude of the planning that's going to go, that would need to take place for us to, to do a five-day full return in spring is really where our energy should be focused. I mean, I, I don't think it's any, an us, an underestimation when Esther said people are exhausted right now. And if we're going to embark on this level of planning, which I'm excited to do, I'm ready to do it. I can't be, we can't be doing both. I don't think that's a realistic expectation if we're still delivering quality education. And so my feeling would be, if we get to the end of next week and we're hearing like, it looks like these pieces are going to be a bit longer, it's going to take a little bit longer for all of these things to happen. Then sure, I'm happy to divest our energies into planning for the increased SEL and wellness time. Flip side of that is if we find out at the end of next week, like, how it looks like these things are going to happen in the way we expected and the vaccines all came in and transportation looks like this, then great, like, let's spend our time on that. I just don't know how to do both of those to the level and the quality that we expect of ourselves in Stratum. I don't think that that's a reasonable expectation. I think we really have to focus on one and do it really well.
And Cheryl, I, I just want to be crystal clear for when our goal is to get everybody back into school this spring. Sometime after April break. And we will be able to be more clear on that as we work through. I will obviously have a definite on my vaccines by the end of next week, right? And I don't, I don't want to promise something I don't have a hundred percent validation on. And, and I've got the most validation I can get from our vaccine, from our state, from our suppliers, right? That they can guarantee, I need, I need over eight hundred vaccines for Saturday. So we've ordered them and, and we've been told, yes, that it's, it's looking very good. So if that's in place, we'll know that by the end of the week, most definitely, right? Probably midweek. As I mentioned, there'll be a joint chairs meeting and some follow-up on that front. I think you'll be much, and it will know that. We, we do know what needs to happen for transportation and that is all ready to go. That'll, you know, we don't have more buses and we don't have more drivers, I can tell you that. And I can tell you, we've called every transportation company, Trish's, I think it was five transportation companies, everyone's in the same boat to add additional buses to our fleet. We cannot use coach buses to transport students because they have to have the bus lights on them and the stop sign that kicks out and coach buses don't have that, so that's not an option. So what that means is, you know, looking at how many kids are, can we get on a bus? And if parents aren't comfortable with that kind of load, will they will transport, right? So that plan is all in motion and, and ready to, to roll. So if the vaccination goes according to plan, if the joint chairs meeting goes as according to what we are hopeful for and every indication is that it would be hopeful. Jean Pierce and, and Anne and everyone, food services has been planning and is ready to go. And then to really work that, the next, after next week when we know one way or the other, really, which direction we're going, everybody's ready to move. The direction we want to go is to get kids in full-time sometime after April break because our teachers will be fully immunized. And that's part of that, that's, that's a game changer, right? So I just want to be clear, that's, that's the intent. And we just have to kind of roll out and see how that vaccination schedule goes next week, as well as some other meetings that are all scheduled to take place. So again, very, very hopeful. Things are looking good. As Kate mentioned, our relationships with union representatives are very strong and positive. Our relationship with transportation companies are positive. We build relationships with the fire department and our local vaccination support, our health partners. So I, I feel, I feel like we're in the best shape we can be and we're sharing as much information as what we know tonight as possible. I just don't, I just can't give a begin date yet because I just don't have every answer yet. And I can't, I can't force the vaccines any faster than, than they're coming.
No, I get that certainly. And we did ask you to, you know, share the draft plans so that people would know. Well, what are people working on? What's behind the scenes? What's going on? It, it may cause some confusion because, you know, they're draft plans, right? But you, you can't have it both ways, right? If you want to know more, then you got to be okay with not having full details. Okay, Carissa, I see your hand.
So I have a couple of questions. First, I thought that, thank you so much, Kate, for throwing those out there, letting us know your thought processes. And what I kind of gathered from it is getting the kids back even for an hour is a lot of planning, a lot of effort. And I think collaboratively, we're all on the page of, let's get these kids back to school in a really good quality way. And I'm not, I'm, this isn't meant to be critical, but it doesn't sound like that's a really good quality way. And it doesn't sound like it's a really good way to channel your efforts and energy when we're, our energy should be getting them back in a really good way. It's kind of redundant. So with that said, it seems like, and I don't know if everybody on the board is in an agreement, but with that said, it seems like we only have two options. It seems like we either have the option to talk as a board to move to three, reduce to three to six feet, or we wait till all the teachers are vaccinated and go five days a week in May. Because you have an immense job on your plate and I want to see that immense job go to quality resulted, quality outcomes. And I'm not quite sure bringing the kids back for these small amount of times is going to produce those quality outcomes or more anxiety because it's more transitions in the children. With that said, I, and Esther, I totally understand that the joint board is meeting from, joint board chairs are meeting. I do, I think that expediency is a really important factor to consider at this point in time. So I would like to have some sort of discussion of moving it from three to six feet. Not that I'm a proponent of it, but I want to learn more about it because I do think time is really important. And I think parents need to hear of this decision-making process. So with that said, can we open up, I would like to open that discussion up among the board members to talk a little bit about that three to six foot, how we feel about that, what are the barriers? I mean, granted, we would have to touch base and, and look at the MOA and how flexible it is, but what are some other factors we would have to consider?
Are you asking me, Carissa, or board members? I'm not clear.
I'm asking anybody who has any say. I mean, like I said, it's more of an information gathering session and I wouldn't be opposed to having this, I would like to have the discussion here in this forum instead of a joint board chair where we, the necessary, community can't necessarily hear it. Not that I don't trust you, Cheryl, because I totally do, but I'd like to know because if it is something feasible and, and it does, we synthesize the information and it is something we want to do, then we should do it now.
I just want to be careful, though, Carissa, that we're not hamstringing ourselves in, you know, well, that we're not penalizing or making it more difficult for us to, you know, to work with our, our, with our association leadership.
Okay.
I, I don't want to, I just want to be careful that we don't step in the wrong direction and make it more difficult to come to an agreement, right? Because, you know, I haven't been to that board chairs meeting yet, I don't know exactly what's on the table. But certainly, things have changed in the past couple of weeks with being able to vaccinate people and, you know, I'm sure there's an element of that discussion that those two things are related in some way. And I, in the discussion, I just want to be really careful that we're not, you know, limiting the ability and negotiate, let's put it that way.
So Cheryl, what if, instead of, I mean, again, I'm thinking time, and then there are so many variables that we can't make a decisive, well-informed decision, could we possibly, and I'm asking every, the board as well as Esther, could we have a me, meeting in less than a month's time if that would change when we could get the kids back to school? Because I really want to make sure that our administration's time and effort is, is put into something valuable.
Um, I don't think, well.
Do you want me to speak to that, Cheryl?
Yeah, I think that's probably wise. I have an opinion, but I'm not sure. It's, I think you should.
I, I can tell you that we are approaching this in the most efficient manner possible. The minute we move to individual boards, et cetera, which you can do. It, it, the efficiency may be affected. So I would recommend you wait until your chair meets next week and then your chair, we can always call, you know, an emergency board meeting. I only have to post, I only need twenty-four hours to post a meeting. So, you know, if, if Cheryl wants to have a, a board meeting, then she can request that and we can post that and that can happen, you know, the end of next week, so to speak, right? So I, my recommendation is to give Cheryl that opportunity to come to the table and hear the process and speak to the efficiency of one process versus another. And then move forward from there. That's only my recommendation.
I mean, Cheryl, I trust, and I trust everyone, I mean, I just, everyone's opinion I would take into account. And Cheryl, I wholeheartedly trust you in that if you find that next meeting, we can get the kids back sooner, you would call a meeting sooner. I would just
I would. Definitely would.
So if, if that's the case, then I would be on board to, to wait. I just, like I said, I'm, I'm just like a hamster on a wheel at this point. But Kate, I don't want your energy to be put towards something other than the best. And if we can't give our kids, if we give our kids mediocrity, it's going to foster mediocrity. So
So the, if I could, I don't mean to cut you off, but I wasn't entirely following what you were saying. I think your, your comment was about the wellness SEL time, the off-day cohorting. Your comment, are you saying that you don't think that two hours of having kids coming into school is worthwhile? Is that what you were saying?
I'm saying it sounds like there's a lot of holes and there's a lot of challenges to each and every one. I would, if, if the community wants our kids back, then I, I'm on board. But I, I would really love to see Kate's energy and the administration and the teacher's energy put towards something that's going to not have so many holes, if you will. But I could be wrong. I mean, it's open for discussion and, and I want to hear everyone's thoughts.
It looks like Kate Davis had her hand up for a while.
Sorry, Kate.
Thanks, that's okay. Um, I agree. I, I think waiting another week to have this meeting is not a good idea. I, I, it's just prolonging the situation. And if we could reach out to the union reps tomorrow, like, I feel like it's, we're in that type of a dire situation where we have to get these kids back to school immediately. This is This is a huge deal. And I feel like the community has spoken and this is what they want. And so we need to look into it and figure out a way to have these conversations. And 100% I support as much as we can get the kids back to school with what Kate Lucas just presented is phenomenal. But I think our first line of defense needs to be 100% in school. How do we make this happen? Let's look, let's, let's get this done. Let's start negotiating at the board level. I think that's the only way.
I have to respectfully disagree. But they did say that they are having meetings with the association leadership and talking to them. These are things that we wouldn't discuss in this environment. So I think it's important that we find out what the plan is for all the schools and how do we work, you know, as a team, as an SAU. And I, I, I agree with Esther, when you break off and do your own thing and you don't have the full picture, that you're not negotiating with, with as much leverage. So my preference would be to at least have a meet, you know, a joint chairs meeting next week. As they're working forward on, you know, building out the, the rest of these plans.
Sarah, clarifying question. So Carissa and Kate, are you suggesting that we do this immediately before teachers are vaccinated? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I'm suggesting having a conversation.
Thank you for clarifying.
Being proactive so that we know as, as soon as these things start to happen, like we're, we're on board, we're ready to go. We've had the conversations already.
Well, I think that's what the team is doing, quite frankly. They're trying to figure out how to get ready to go. And it's very complicated. So even if we had an answer tomorrow, they, it doesn't mean the day after that kids can come back. They have a lot of factors they need to figure out. And not the least of which, they have to find out what parents are looking for. Because I do think it's real, that there are some people who are going to say, I don't want my kid back in school in that environment. And we'll have some changes and some moving around. And I mean, it's a lot of puzzle pieces to make this, to make this come together. And I do think that the, the, the change in information around vaccination is helping enable getting our kids back to school. It's a, it's a, it's a game changer. So I'm a little, I mean, we're just, we're just giving feedback at the moment. I think if, if, if I had the choice between what we're doing today versus option two, which was the off day, and those are my choices. I would rather have option two. I'd rather have kids come back for a couple hours one time a week to have more in-school time. I would rather do that. If my options were what we're doing today versus full returns in person, I'd rather have full return in person. So I wouldn't want to, you know, totally poo-poo option two and skip over it, you know, and it's possible that full return won't work. We can't figure it out. There's a lot of moving pieces here. And if that's the case, I would rather give more, I would rather give what we can than nothing at all. That's my opinion. Erin, what were you going to say?
Well, I was just going to say Kate said that we're not doing the SEL option if we feel like the full return is going to happen, correct, Kate? I'm not putting words in your mouth.
So I wasn't making the decision. I was suggesting, I just don't want you to think that that's, I was suggesting that if we found out the middle of next week towards the, because there is a, there's a major meeting next Wednesday, the vaccinations, the vaccines will be in. Like there are factors that literally will be happening within a week's timeframe that we know, we will know so much more exactly one week from today that would inform whether or not option two was the highest probability or five full days return was the highest probability. In my mind, if we find out in a week that like, yeah, five day full return is possible, then let's dive in to do that and do it really well. If we get to the end of next week and they're like, gosh, the vaccines didn't come. We thought we were getting a shipment, none of them came. Well, then maybe we need to talk about, because it, what it would mean is that would just get pushed out a little bit, right? So then in my mind, like, well, then let's do those SEL times. While it's not the same as, as five full days, and I fully acknowledge that, it's at least something. And from what I heard from the community at February's meeting is every little bit matters. It is certainly not a Band-Aid. It doesn't repair the, the, it doesn't fix the alternating days, but every little bit matters. So if we can't, if for some reason, we can't return five full days in the spring, at least right, you know, after vacation or whatever that is, well, then we'll put that in place because I don't want to do nothing. But if there is a strong likelihood that those pieces are going to come together, then that's where our energy should go. So I'm not trying to make a decision. I'm just trying to say, whatever, wherever we are, let's do the best we can with what we decision is made.
And those decisions are coming fast. I mean.
Like so fast, it's like our heads are spinning.
Vaccination pod, we have great options ahead of us and we have no movement on the vaccine dates. So if we can all look to May 3rd and do everything we need to do to get everybody in school on May 3rd, I'd kick SEL to the curb for now. Possible.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, any more comments? Do we want to go to, oh, it's Carissa? Is that your hand?
That is my hand. I just said, if it was in the agenda or when we're going to address the community or the visitors' comments.
Um, that's coming next. And what we'd like to do, because we don't have, excuse me, we don't have any more information. We have only the information that we have at the moment because the plan's not fully baked yet. So I'm really looking for comments and feedback rather than, you know, a gazillion questions that we can't answer. So let me see what.
I think Kate has a question.
You have a question before we want to talk to the group?
Okay. Quick question. Do we have any plan for when these meetings will go back to in-person and not be on Zoom? Just curious.
Probably when we let visitors back into the school. So I would expect we might continue this till June. We don't, we haven't talked about it, quite honestly, but that's really the reason why we're doing it this way. Because we don't want extra people in the school. We don't have parents, we don't have visitors, we don't have anybody in the school. It might be wise to continue this all the way till, you know, till the end of the summer. We kind of have to talk about that again as a board. How do we want to have people in the, in the building? And, you know, part of keeping people out keeps it safe, right? Or keeps the environment safe. That was the rationale behind that.
Okay.
Carol, I got a question.
I have a quick question for you. Would it be an option, and this idea was from a visitor, so I'm totally taking her move. So sorry. Would, could we actually schedule a meeting sooner so we can communicate with the parents, the results of that meeting? Or should we just wait and see? I mean, as a board, what, what does everyone think on that? Because I, I kind of thought it was a good idea. Oh, Esther.
Yeah, I, if it's, if it's to do with negotiations, there's negotiating rules around that. So if they're entering into negotiations, we can't necessarily share publicly until that, until the board votes on negotiate. There's a process and RSA is driven, drive that. I don't want to say it's an automatic. Probably be entering into some kind of negotiation.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, you went underwater on me.
Yeah, can people please mute? That would be really helpful. What I said was if, if they go into some kind of negotiations next week, then we have to go through that process before it comes back to the public, remember? Just like any negotiation.
I'm just figuring out a way to communicate to the public where we are in, in it. So not to have this meeting and then wait a really long time. So I didn't know if we could have a meeting or we can, in what platform we can communicate where we are in the process, even if it's just, hey, we're still working on it. Because a lot of people are sitting at the edges of their seats.
Yeah, I think we certainly can communicate what the process is going to be.
Right, even if it's just, we're still working on it, it's still happening. I just don't want this to be a, a big question mark and then everybody is waiting. So whatever that look, that could look like, I think that the community members and the stakeholders would appreciate that.
Kate and David Ryan both do weekly updates. So I would think that, that information will be coming out from those sources.
I would agree.
That makes sense. That'd be good. That's probably the best, the best source of information.
So for anybody here who is looking for, I mean, because it sounds like that's where we're headed. That's what, where they can access the information is the upcoming emails from them. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page and we can know what to look for and potentially when with so many variables.
Especially if we're working together, if that makes sense. And I think it from the administration or from, from David's office.
So that's where they can look for it. All right.
Okay.
Okay, my mouth.
That's right. So I'm looking at what's in the chat here. And like I said, we don't have more information than what's been shared. So some of the questions are really specific. There's some suggestions which I think are worthwhile. You know, we'll, we'll of course capture this stuff. Looking for like comments. There's a question about, do we have a sense of how many parents would be willing to drive? No, we don't. That would be probably part of the questionnaire information. Of course, that's a missing piece of information.
Kate, how many parents right now, percentage-wise or ballpark, park figure, transport their children?
So at the beginning of the year, when we did the original survey, it was about a 70/30 split. And at this point, we, it's significantly more than that. And the reason I say that is because I think in the beginning of the fall, more parents were able to do that. And as the year has progressed, more families have reached out and said, we can only transport our kids. Can we please get them on the buses? Which has also led to a problem because we don't have additional buses. And so I've had to say to parents, I'm kind of in a bind because I don't actually have any more seats on any of our buses. So I don't know the exact number anymore, Chris, in terms of percentages. It was roughly about a 73, you know, 27 split, but it's more than that now. And I think that makes sense. I think more parents are working back in their, their establishments rather than working from home and so on. But we are at max capacity at this point.
There's comment about kids with IEPs who already commit to six weeks of summer school. Perhaps six weeks is, is, is that enough? Or is there, I'm going to ask, is there a way to do more? Of course, I don't expect answers on these questions right now. It's just feedback. And we got to thank you. Thank you. We don't get those very often. People agreeing that we shouldn't be spending our time on on anything that's not full-time instruction.
So I, I see a trend, and Cheryl, you shut me up if you want to, about concerns related to the kids who don't have IEPs or special instruction or needing more than six weeks of instruction because of regressions that they've experienced because of COVID. Kate, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. Can you speak to how, like how we can communicate or how we can move forward on, not forward, but how we can address that? Or if that's addressable, I mean, what your thoughts are on that? I just, I don't want to go past them. I think there are important questions.
I guess I'm not sure of the question, Carissa. Can you help me understand? I, I see that.
That wasn't articulated at all. So I just see one parent who says that we need more face-to-face hours for the summer than usual. And then another parent who had said, kids need more teacher time. How can we help kids who are not on intervention plan? So I see a little bit concerned regarding children needing more time over the summer. Is that an option or are we kind of, because are you doing the best you can? And this is kind of what it is and there isn't room for that.
Well, I certainly don't want to say this is what it is because I think we can always go back to the drawing board and have further conversations. But typically ESY is not six weeks, it's four weeks. So we've already looked at increasing it. Typically, we do just ESY, but we're already extending it to students that receive intervention, whether that's tier two or tier three. So in terms of like the, the typical programming to what we're thinking or proposing we offer this summer, it's significantly different. Also, they usually came, you know, they came in for roughly an hour and a half. We're suggesting they come in for three hours. So I think it's really important that it, I don't know that we're ever going to, I don't know that people are ever going to feel like it's enough because I think it's been a hard year, right? And I think we're seeing our students in a different place than we anticipated a year ago, hoping they would be. But I do think there's been a really conscious effort to think about summer programming in a very different way to meet the needs of more students. I'm not suggesting it's perfect and we can certainly have further conversations. But I do feel like we were intentionally making it much more intensive and longer hours, longer duration and open to more students.
It certainly helps when you give us a baseline to what you were doing and what you're now doing. So I can absolutely see the difference.
So Kate, do you have another comment?
Me, Kate, or Kate?
I see your hand up. That's why I'm trying to scroll and see your hand at the same time.
Question, so when all the teachers are vaccinated, are we full force, full, like we're fullback, no, like what's the plan for, if we're looking at May 3rd, that's coming up, like what's the plan? How's it going to look when, when we're back?
I don't think we know that yet.
Can we?
And that's what needs to be figured out between now and the, the final plan. And that's.
Right.
You know, that's, it's, we don't just dictate that. That's part of the complexity of this. We have, we have teachers and paras and parents and all of that to consider and figure out. So that's what that meeting next week will be about. How do we address, you know, all the people in our educational system, right? And work with them to come to the plan, right? Collaboratively, collectively, et cetera.
Okay. Cheryl, is it okay if I jump in real quick? I just want to.
Please do.
Because I think I saw in there something about, now I can't find it, but there was like, what are the factors? Was, I think, one of the questions.
Yeah, I was on that one too. Yeah.
I tried to articulate that in the slide, so I apologize if it wasn't very clear. I think I wrote factors for consideration multiple times. But if we want further discussion, then I can expand upon something as an example. So drop off and pickup is a factor for consideration because when you're talking about going from 180 kids to a day to 500 kids a day or 430 kids a day, whatever it happens to be, it's going to take substantially longer. So we've already talked about how do we reroute the traffic when we get there? Where do we have to station staff? How can we get them in the building faster? They can go straight to their rooms versus having to wait outside. What additional staffing would that require? How do we notify parents? How do we divide the alphabet differently so that it's staggered so we don't back up onto Route 33? Because that would be a disaster. So there are all these things, I guess that's just an example of, we are already thinking about all of those things. We're devising plans. We've gone through three or four drafts. But not, but those are things that, again, until we know for certain, we won't hammer down the exact plan, right? We're not going to, I don't want to put out like, here's the six versions because the first five, we realized wouldn't work for a variety of reasons. So those are the kind of factors. And there's, I understand for some people that feels small, but when you're trying to run an entire school with that many children and staff, it matters. When we're thinking about, it's now going to take 35 minutes to get the kids in the building in the morning. That's a huge chunk of the day that we already have. So we're trying our best to be as efficient and effective as possible. But again, some of these things have to be worked out over the next, you know, two or three weeks. They're not things that parents can work out, right? We're going to have to survey parents, how many people are driving? How many people are going to need the bus? But the, the details of what that looks like in terms of facilities and staffing are things that have to be done within the building. So that's just one example of listed, that is a factor. I think one of the other questions was about the map. Well, we have all of our space used, utilized right now. And if we're going to be bringing back all kids, we have to change a lot of those spaces. We're going to have certain classrooms, they're going to have to go to some of them that are actually bigger. We have some that are 900 feet, square feet. We have some that are 1100 square feet. So the classrooms that have 20 kids in it are going to go to the 1100 square feet, which means shifting rooms around. So there, again, these are all things that we have to think about and are considerations. But how much we, I think this goes back to Chris's point, is like, how much we dive into, how deeply we get into that, which is a really time-consuming process, has some factors that we believe will be much more clear by the end of next week, which then we can get into more of those things. I don't know if that helps at all. I think that's, I'm trying to elaborate on some of the, the pieces that I thought maybe I had already done, but wasn't clear enough about.
Sorry, I'm just reading through this. I think Kate, you just went over a bunch of, it's about roadblocks. I think you've just addressed some of them. And of course, food services is, I don't want to call it a roadblock. It's complicated, right? How do, we don't have, we don't have cafeteria set up for food service right now. And remember, if we get through this vaccination phase, the adults are vaccinated, the children aren't, right? So we still have protocols. We still got to, you know, take care of the, of keeping the kids safe, et cetera. So we can't. So we can't just bring them back like we would a regular year. All of these processes and flows of people in the, in the hallways and, um, like Kate said, dismissals and coming into school, et cetera. We, we can't have the same, you know, types of huge gatherings and things like that. So we still have to manage the way the building is, um, has kids in it in a tighter way than we probably have in the past. Let's see, what am I missing? Driving is helpful. Be clear in the survey. If the bus is better, tell us that. A lot of comments around, um, some of the things that we've already talked about. I don't think I've missed anything. We're trying to share openly. I'll tell people what the challenges are. This is not a, a fully developed plan and we, um, asked the team to, you know, to share options, let people know more of, uh, what, what's being considered and how difficult it is to figure it out. And they're going to figure it out and, you know, um, get tighter on what are the challenges? And hopefully we can figure out, uh, workarounds and adaptations. New here. Um, I, I'm going to just answer this last one. It's about, um, when teachers are vaccinated, do we remove all social distancing? I, I don't think so. I think social distancing is still something that is part of the recommendations. I, I don't think, I don't think that's the case, although I'm not an expert in, um, in the, you know, effects of having a certain percentage of people vaccinated. There's Daniel Kim's question. Let's see. All right. I think that covers everything. So thank you for everybody's input. Um, next steps, it sounds like family surveys, Kate's and next week's meetings and, uh, next steps. To try to work towards, um, getting kids back to school this year. Uh, I think we'll move on to old business. Um, I had one question that was a follow-up. Uh, so I'm curious, and Kate, you may not know this off the top of your head, kindergarten enrollment, how do we look for next year? So far, we were, I think we're at 65 last time.
Um, as of today, we are at 75, um, students enrolled for kindergarten, which is really exciting.
That is, that's great. That's a good number. Getting there. Go ahead.
No, I'll, I'll wait. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Cheryl.
That's all right. I was going to say, um, the next thing we, we're going to talk about is the COVID manifest approval process, just to clarify. So we agreed last time that we would, uh, include those manifests and voting on those manifests in our meeting, uh, rather than having everybody come into the office, um, and sign them. Uh, primarily because it's difficult for, I would speak for myself, it's difficult to get into those, into the office on a ti, a timely basis, during business hours. Sorry. Uh, but we do anticipate that that would be a temporary, um, a, a temporary situation until, uh, you know, we get back to in-person meetings when the manifest would then become part of our, um, part of our board materials when we're in the office or in the, in the board meeting together. I had one more question on new business. There is Kate. Um, when will assessments be done? Where's Kate? For this year?
Kate Lucas.
There you are. Because I'm sorry. No, Kate Lucas, I'm sorry. I was curious. I know you mentioned it last time that, um, the assessments are coming up for, you know, year on progress. And I'm curious to understand how it, uh, compares to prior years and, you know, the, how many kids, you know, made progress this year, stayed on grade level, just so we understand where are we? Um, with the catch-up that we need to do with these kids for next year. And it doesn't, we don't need an answer tonight, of course, but I'd just like to put that on the radar so that we can understand that. And better understanding where we are. Any other new business? Anybody else? I got Esther, I got Kate. How about Kate? Davis. I can't hear you, Kate. No, you're on mute.
All right. Sorry. I know we moved on, but I just wanted to touch base. It seems like parents still had a, several had questions about, um, Daniel Kim's question. I just wanted to clarify that.
Um, I think that is, uh, covered in the conversations we're going to be having next week with the, the joint board, which is part of the reason I didn't want to, uh, dwell on that any further. I think we've answered that. As, as far as we can answer it for the moment.
Okay.
Okay, Esther.
Hi, a couple of things, just to clarify, it's a joint chair, Cheryl. I don't want people to think it's a joint.
What did I say? Oh, I said joint board. Oh, I beg your pardon. Yeah, you're right. Joint chairs.
And in that realm, I just need it for purposes of the minutes. Uh, as the chair, we're working to get all of our contracts done. Um, only the chair signs all those. You have an option to either come in and do that, or we can get an electronic signature, um, from you. So you would give us one signature, we would load it in our system and it would be electronic and signed contracts. Um, which would you like to do?
Um, are they ready?
They are just about ready, yes.
I could come in Friday afternoon.
Uh, let me check with, um, let me check with Michelle Larson. I know you're on here. Are they ready for Friday afternoon?
Hi, I just gave them to HR and HR is going to be reviewing them. Um, they're not scheduled to go out until April 12th. Um, so, um, maybe we can have Deb in HR give Cheryl an indication as to when the, when they'll be ready for her. I'm not sure they'll quite be ready on Friday.
Okay. So it sounds like, I just have time on Friday. That's why I suggested Friday. So we could find another time.
Okay, so it sounds like you want to come in to sign them. Is that?
Yeah, I'd rather.
Okay.
Yeah.
Want to make people, give people options. That's all, Cheryl.
No, I appreciate it. But if I can come in, I would do that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Any old business process? Kate, Lucas.
So, so, sorry. Um, we had, um, been looking at the spring schedule for what we had typically, or what we had originally planned. I'm sorry, for the early releases for the remainder of the year. Um, because we took, we typically have our student-led conferences on Thursdays. Um, and one of the things that's obviously happened with the alternating schedule is that a number of things, for example, last week's power outage on Tuesday affected our white students. Um, and it felt like, um, based on the number of times our white students were impacted, we'd like to propose a couple, um, changes in dates for events in the spring for early releases. The first is that we have scheduled our student-led conferences, we had planned for Thursday, April 1st and Thursday, April 8th. We would like to propose that the board approve moving the, um, one scheduled for, um, April 1st to March 31st, which is a Wednesday, so that we're not, again, once again, um, impacting the students that attend school in the white cohort. Um, the second thing we wanted to look at is we have our last early release day, um, was scheduled for Thursday, May 13th. Um, and again, we'd like to propose that we move that to Monday, May 17th, um, so that we're not, um, again, um, impacting the white cohorts days for in-person learning. I recognize that the, the May date may be, um, irrelevant because we may, very well may be in five full days. But it just, um, again, given the, the factors that have to all come together, we were trying to be just proactive about that. And we've been thinking about it since January before all of this sort of, all the changes that have happened over the past, um, eight weeks. So we're just looking for the board to approve those two changes of dates that we can make that announcement to the community.
Are there, what's the drawback to making those changes? Are people are just, they, they have plans lined up? Uh, is there any, any significant issue that we know of for moving those dates? Erin?
How skewed is the time, the in-person time between the white and the blue cohort?
We actually looked at it, um, and, um, there have been more, the white cohort has been significantly more impacted. Um, part of that is, um, for example, um, yesterday was an in-service day across the entire SAU. It was a white day. Last Tuesday, I mean, granted, we can't control the weather. Last Tuesday was one of them. Um, I believe one of our snow learning days was on a Thursday. So I just think it's at this point really important to think about, um, we, I don't think there's a way for us to make it perfectly equitable. And we looked at that as well, but this was at least some small concessions for the time being to try to, um, have our white students for more in-person time.
I'll make a motion to approve those changes.
Who's that? I'm sorry. Was that Erin?
It was Erin.
So we got a motion by Sarah, a second by Erin. Any discussion? Okay, um, we'll go around the table. How about Carissa?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So that's 500. Okey-dokey. All right. I think that's it for tonight. I don't think we have any additional business. Everybody has their, um, their assignments for committee, so you should be hearing for next committee meetings. And I have joint chairs meeting next week, so that'll be really interesting and hopefully we will have, uh, really good, um, success in the next week of, uh, moving things in a direction we want to move them. So with that, I will say thank you and let's have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Carissa. Give a second.
So before we do this, I just see some things on the, the chat that says, children aren't getting sick. Children are getting sick. I, I want to make that clear to the board. I want to make that clear to the public. And I'm not afraid. I have two children at home with COVID. So it is due to the school that so far it has not spread and there isn't shame in that. But parents need to be know that they are getting sick and I understand data and there isn't a, uh, someone who wants to get these kids back more than I do. But I really don't like reading that when I'm sitting home with two children who have COVID and they are sick. So I just really wanted to make that clear, that we all want the kids back and we all will do what they have to do. But our main job is to keep them safe. And I want, I, I want to make that clear to everybody. Um, because that's what we all trying to do. That's it. Thank you. I, I just read that and I wanted to say my piece. Um, and it's because of the school and the nurse that it hasn't spread, thank goodness. But to say kids aren't getting sick, that's not, that's false. And Kate, thank you to your staff, to everybody for all of that you've done. Um, but it's a reality and we need to face that. And I say that with a lot of Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. No, and, and, you know, we get a, a weekly update or a bi-weekly update from the SAU administrative office. I think we've had 80 cases of, um, COVID in the school with children. So, um, clearly, I, I, yeah, clearly that's not entirely accurate, but, you know, people are entitled to say what they want to say. All right. So we have a, a motion. We have a second. Wait, did we get a second? I'm sorry. Who was the second? We did not get a second. Thank you, Caitlin, for letting me know. Who wants to be a second on adjourning?
I'll second.
Thanks, Erin. Okay. All those in favor? I. Kate Davis, you're not going to, not going to vote today? Okay. Do we have everybody else? Is Sarah?
Yeah.
There you are, Sarah. Thank you. So 500. And we will, let's see, see you at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.